This meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, and we'll start by finalizing our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented?
If you could please add one item under discussion, a seventh discussion item, it's the new maintenance vehicle, and you should have some handout materials at your place that cover that item.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda with that change?
I need that we approve the agenda with the change.
Very good. Thanks, Celeste. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and we'll move to the superintendent's report. Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Our first order of business this evening is the Special Education PAC Awards, and to do those honors, Janine Matson-Gierhart will come to the podium and do this. Hi, Janine.
Hi. I should have worn my contacts so I could see you. Good afternoon. It is my pleasure once again to introduce you to 11 nominees that we had this year to be considered for the Special Education Award Excellence, Excellence Award, excuse me. So without further ado, many of the folks were not able to join us today, unfortunately. So, sorry about that. I don't really like this. So we're going to go over to the first person who is here, Kristin Everts. Kristin, can you stand a little bit? Welcome. Kristin is a teacher over here at Portage Northern, and I wanted to recognize her because I haven't seen her in person for a very long time. Over a year. So we'll stay, we'll stay like this because I have my, I don't have my mask on, but I just wanted to recognize you and for the board to see what it was, a special education teacher. Kristin, you are. Kristin has been one of our very active virtual teachers and learners. I think we've all been a bunch of learners, and I just wanted to make sure that we honor you. So come on over here. I don't think I put you first here. Anna, need help. So I just want to say, can I give you just a little bit of a hug? Congratulations. So, and Anna will give you your certificate. And I'm not sure, we're not doing board handshaking, but maybe we could do a little arm wave or something like that. Thanks, Kristin. It's really good to see you. Yeah, isn't it fun? Okay. For the next couple of folks we have, we have Megan Hall, who is also a teacher here at Portage Northern. She was unable to make it, unfortunately, because of childcare, but she is also one of our nominees. We have Marnie Shinko-Godby, a special education teacher at the elementary level at Angling Road Elementary. We have Viola Stiverson, Lake Center Elementary. We have Dana Martin, who is the early childhood special education teacher at Curious Kids. We have Kate Smith at North Middle. And we have a team of individuals from Central High. We have Casey Batters, Brandon Baker, Caitlin Deja, Jamie Nelson, and Brian Pack. So I've never had this many nominees before, so that's very exciting. There you go. Okay. So our winners, we have, still have three winners. We have Megan Hall, again from Portage Northern. We have Viola Stiverson from Lake Center. And we have Marnie Godby from Angling Road. So in the weirdness of virtual, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the administration team here at Portage, that we are very proud of all our special educators, and we want to recognize the good work that these 11 folks have done.
Can I just say, I've had the privilege of working with Kristin as a student mentor myself, and I just can't say enough about the good work that she has done with the students here at Portage Northern who need her help. So she is engaged with them, she is personal with them, she just builds great relationships with her students and really encourages them. So thank you, Kristin, for doing that.
Thank you, Janine. Congratulations, everyone. I know how challenging it is to get here for these meetings, just especially on school nights when other responsibilities call on you as well. So thank you for those that have been able to make it. Just a couple of other quick updates from me. One is, just to remind you or let you know that we have a very active district values team that's, that's in place now. Celeste is representing the board on that team. We have about 50 individuals from staff who are working on identifying and surfacing district values. Those that have served us well, as well as those values that we may need to consider going into the future for the next 100 years. We're hoping that this values work will, or can be used as a way to celebrate the past and also launch us into the next, you know, 100 years of our existence as we, as we celebrate our centennial this, this next school year. Like I said, we have about 50 members who are serving on that committee. It's a broad section of representatives from all of our school buildings that represent all of our different employee groups that we have. They're meeting virtually right now. KK Owen, our, our coach from Studer, is facilitating that process. They have, we intentionally made it that large, knowing that some people couldn't attend to all the meetings. So we've had two meetings so far with about 37 people attending each meeting, had some very good input into the process. They've divided themselves into three committees. There's a communications committee, a survey committee, and a writing committee. And each of those committees has co-chairs that KK is working with to, to really organize the agenda and get the, get the messaging out. Right now, the survey committee is working on a survey to take this initial set of values that have been surfaced out to the community. So it'll be students, staff, and parents will be surveyed in the initial round, and then we hope to do that before the, the end of the school year. And then in June sometime, we'll open it up to the broader community to provide input. So we want to get as many voices as possible to be heard, to make sure that what we're capturing really reflects our community. And while we're doing this work, this committee is also charged with beginning to draft a statement for what, a definition of equity for a Portage Public Schools. So a lot of good work that's already happening, and that will continue to happen throughout the summer and into next fall, when we hope to finish up this process. So I guess the, you know, the key thing there is we want community input, we want staff input, student input. We've identified a number of groups that already are in existence in our schools that we can touch base with and connect and get feedback on the work we're doing early in the process. And then the, the only other thing I want to mention is that on May 15th, this Saturday, we have, we'll be hosting a vaccination clinic for our community that's open to anyone 16 years of age and older, and that'll be held at Portage Central at the stable there from 10 o'clock until 2:00. And that's by appointment. And we have sent notice out to parents, as well as to our staff, for anyone wishing to get a vaccination there. One of the things we are hoping that we could announce, you know, today in conjunction with this, was that the vaccines would be available to anyone 12 and up. After our announcement went out, we learned that the FDA did approve 12 to 14-year-olds, or 12 to 15-year-olds to be vaccinated. I guess there's another step in the process, so if that happens, we'll make sure people understand that, that that's open to them as well. So that's this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 at the stable. And then it will be the Pfizer vaccine, and they have set a second date for the second vaccine for June 5th, as, at the stable as well. So that's good news for those families that want to take advantage of that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark.
Any questions on anything I said, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, we'll move to Board Education. Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan update.
And Dr. Pascoe and Mr. Huber will be doing the honors on this one.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Beilang and trustees. I'll be presenting our monthly COVID-19 Senate Learning Plan tonight for reconfirmation. We'll give an update on the Kalamazoo County and Regional Health Status, look at our K-12 instructional programming. We'll revisit those percentages that Kelly had presented last board meeting, face-to-face in our virtual learns in each of our buildings, some attendance data, and look at our plans for the future as we talk about summer learning, as well as our 21-22 learning experiences for the fall. Let's start by looking at the current health data. As of today, we have seen a decrease in our positive testing rate within Kalamazoo County. Had a little spike in April, as we all know. Regionally, we're at Level E, seven-day new case average of 61, and currently have zero outbreaks within the district. As you guys know, we continue to implement our cleaning safety protocols, mask wearing, distancing when possible, and all of our other safety measures that helped us through the pandemic thus far. We'll continue to watch the data as the last few weeks of school play out. As for our K-12 programming, our PPS-approved curriculum continues to be delivered four days a week, either face-to-face or virtually. We have a small group of students participating in CAVIC, an asynchronous program with the partnership through KRESA. We do provide support services, provide it to students who have been identified and in need. And then our Fridays remain asynchronous learning days, where our staff engage in professional learning, planning, some collaboration, and student intervention when needed. And then, as you know, we continue to utilize our Fridays to administer some M-step assessment. Transportation and breakfast are provided for those who have signed up and come in. All of our virtual students were invited to participate, and that's housed at each of our buildings. This Friday, I believe we have 3rd, 4th, and 8th graders participating in M-step. Current mode of instruction, as of today, May 10th, here's where we are overall. The numbers have not changed a whole lot since the last presentation. So this gives you a snapshot of face-to-face, virtual, and CAVIC at each level. We'll break down a little bit more for each building in the, in the coming slides. But as you can see, we have a range, attending face-to-face, 41.8% at the high school level, face-to-face, 58% at middle school, and 72.5% at elementary. We have had a few students transition from virtual to face-to-face, particularly at the secondary level during marking period four, but not enough to report on or change these numbers that have been presented in the past. So we have approximately 49, 50 students enrolled in CAVIC as we finish out the year. Looking deeper into each individual building at the elementary level, you can see there's kind of a wide range at each building in each mode of instruction. So it ranges from 69, 65.9% face-to-face at Amberly, all the way up to 86.2 at Lake Center for our face-to-face learners, and 13% to 33% for, when looking at virtual percentages. And again, a small number, I think it's around 30 students or so enrolled in CAVIC at elementary. And then secondary, this chart shows the percentage of face-to-face and virtual as well at each of our buildings. Central Middle, 64.7% face-to-face, with 35 virtual. North Middle, 56.6% face-to-face, 42.9 virtual. West, almost at 53 face-to-face, and 47.2 virtual. And then at the high school level, you know, 45% at Central High face-to-face, about 55% at the virtual. Northern High, 36.8% face-to-face, about 63% virtual. And community, 52% face-to-face, and 47.3 virtual. Still under that 1% at each of our secondary buildings for our CAVIC enrollment, which you guys know is Michigan Virtual courses. Attendance rates seem to remain the same. We do see some positive changes in the more detailed attendance trends. Our counselors and our folks within the buildings make attendance calls daily when we see students are absent, and we're holding steady, at least for the month of April, at around that 96%. All right. So let's take a look moving forward in terms of the summer months and what our planning looks like. We continue to develop our summer learning plans for all levels. So elementary and middle school, we're looking to utilize tutoring as a means to provide students with extra support in the summer months. And the high school level is focused more on credit recovery and career pathway opportunities. So we'll run the summer learning program from June 14th all the way to August 6th, and have a variety of enrollment options and modes of learning. Elementary will offer identified students needing the most support the opportunity to receive 10 hours of small group or individual tutoring in ELA and mathematics, while focusing on some social-emotional learning as well. This will occur either in a two-week frame or once a week over a span of eight weeks, and that's based off of family preference. So there is a little bit of flexibility for participating this summer. And the tutoring can occur virtually or onsite with transportation provided. The middle school, we'll offer students identified through rank order as needed, the most support, 10 hours of small group or project-based learning that will be onsite, and transportation will also be provided. Then at the high school level, we're offering two main learning opportunities for students to recover credit. So there'll be the full course recovery like we're used to, as well as more of a unit or an assignment credit recovery program. And that unit and assignment credit recovery option is more for students that were really close to passing their high school courses. So students are identified and enrolled in the high school program based off of, we're going to look at the spring of 2021 failure. We'll go back to fall and spring semesters of 2020. Those that are not on track to graduate, and then students in full course credit recovery will need to be identified with the help of our counselors and our teachers as we move through the next few weeks. We also have a program called My City School that'll be available to students identified by counselors and teachers who would benefit from engaging in career pathways, opportunities. So it's a summer youth employment program that serves as the gateway to paid internships and work experience. The program's seven weeks this summer. Students get paid to explore as many career paths, develop leadership skills, learn how to set goals, and connect with employers within the Portage community. We'll utilize Teach Camp as well as we go into August for professional learning for our teachers and our staff. The planning's underway for that, and the goal is to align our professional learning strategies with our district MYKIP. So we're, we're doing a new Michigan improvement process, school improvement process, and we're trying to align all that as we move into next school year. And then currently, we're gathering information for our K-12 virtual program, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and creating our master schedules based off of interests as well. Something that we want to pay attention to in terms of, or at least noting, is that our summer learning is going to be funded by SER-2, 31A, as well as our 23B funding. So there's quite a bit of funding that's coming into the district to help support that summer learning program, which is, which is nice, so we can do more things than typically we're, we're used to doing. So let's take a look at the 21-22 learning experience. This is what our plans are as we return into next school year. Face-to-face, in-person instruction will be our main modality, where we'll continue to deliver our PPS curriculum based on the Michigan standards five days a week. We'll follow our health and safety protocols based on whatever the current recommendations are from CDC, MDHHS, and the Health Department here locally, as it results to cleaning, mask wearing, social distancing, and we'll see what the quarantine guidelines are as we move into August. Our goal is to build on our face-to-face program. We want to learn from some of the great things that, that the pandemic has brought us in terms of effective practices. We don't want to lose sight of that from the last school year. So particularly how we integrate it technology and keeping connected with kids. We want to not lose sight of some of that stuff and make sure that's part of our face-to-face option. And obviously, we'll do some training in August through Teach Camp to focus on those best practices as we move into the school year. Virtually, that will be our second mode of instruction. It'll have a place for a smaller percentage of our families. So this will be a five-day-a-week synchronous program using our PPS curriculum and taught by our PPS teachers. Our high school virtual program will have some limited course offerings, and we'll offer the best mix of virtual courses for students to complete our PPS diploma. They'll have the opportunity to blend both virtual and some face-to-face instruction. We have approximately 200 students that are currently signed up for the fall, and so mostly fully virtual or a blended learning. So it gives you an idea how many students are interested going into August and September. At the middle school level, it is a full-year commitment, as you can see on this graphic, and it is 100% virtual. Core curriculum will be taught by our teachers, and electus will include some asynchronous options. And that enrollment is still open until this Thursday. So we don't know what, exactly what we have yet, but we do know we had about 120 families and students that were interested in enrolling. We're not there just yet. Last secondary staffing meeting we had last week, we were a little short of that. So we're interested to see how things close out on Thursday in terms of what our middle school numbers look like based off of interest. K-5 is also a full-year commitment. We've got dedicated classroom PPS teachers leading that work. Right now, we have just around 150 elementary students and families that are looking to have that as their mode of instruction for next school year. And that's a goal of having one section per grade level, K-5. That daily schedule will be synchronous, be large and small group instruction, and may have some asynchronous lessons and components built in. I know that was kind of a lot to go over, and we had a few additional slides that we typically do, but, you know, we thank you for your time tonight, and obviously, your support throughout this school year hasn't been easy, but we really appreciate you guys working alongside us. And so I guess at this time, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to take those and try to answer them.
Yeah, Dr. Pascoe.
Just a question.
I know, because having kids in the high school, some of the classes, you know, teaching four days a week and teaching virtually, they're, they're just not going to finish the year with the full curriculum. So how do they pick up next year? You know, some of these classes that, that build on, you know, the class they take next year will build on what they learned this year, but they didn't, you know, really finish it.
Yeah. And that's a conversation we've had, and Mike, you can add too, but, you know, when we talk about, you know, the phrase "learning loss" or "learning gap," you know, that's kind of the recent talk, is how are we going to recover for any, any missed content or folks that may be a little bit behind? I think it's in, all in that same conversation. Our teachers have done a wonderful job this year of really focusing on, on the central standards and the most important things within their scope and sequence of their syllabus. I think they'll continue to do that same stuff. Obviously, we'll be doing some benchmark assessments. Our teachers do a lot of formative assessment at the beginning of the year to kind of see where kids are coming, coming in. So, you know, they'll be the ones that identify kind of what was missed and try to build, you know, that first semester of learning to help close any gap that we've seen throughout the pandemic. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, we're going to repeat the, a similar process like we did last summer, where we, in the process of identifying those essential standards, we looked at the learning that they would need to attain them, and we will probably make some adjustments in our delivery of, of the curriculum. Of course, every school everywhere is facing that same situation about how much we want to talk about a gap. And, and we look at it less of a gap and more of, here's where the students are when they're walking in, let's continue to move them forward and identify the learning they need with the teachers that we have, and we think we'll be in a good spot for next year as well.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we don't set kids up for failure when they, when they jump in class.
Sure, certainly.
You know, for next year also, I just want to share my concerns. It's nothing we have control over. There's kids that want to learn virtual, but I'm concerned the kids that are choosing to learn, learn virtually are probably the kids that really need to be in the building with, with teachers that mentor them and counselors that are on top of them. You know, reviewing the curriculum, that it looks like we're going to be teaching virtually isn't going to be as challenging as what's going to be going on in the building. And so those are the kids, I think, really get a lot more than just, you know, the basic curriculum by being in the building, and that just, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but, I mean, we'll probably have to step up our counseling or something just to make sure these kids are engaged and they're, and they're, you know, it's all about learning. It's not about getting grades, it's not about getting the kid through the class. Are they learning anything? So that's just a concern. I just have, you know, for everybody.
Well, I know our teacher leaders, I know our counselors, and I know our administrators, they're, they're fully aware of those that weren't not successful in the virtual or the high flex situation that we had this year. They have been in constant contact with those families and having those crucial conversations to say, and encouraging them to come back to that face-to-face learning opportunity so we can have those wraparound services and make sure that they're successful as best as possible. Mike, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, we changed the, the program and our look for virtual next year because we are on an expectation at this point in time of five days a week. So we know the engagement level is expected to be higher, and of course, the attendance rules this year were waived to some degree for how we were both engaged and expected to ensure students are attending. So those are both higher. And to support that somewhat, because we know some students are choosing, have been virtual for the year and they would want to stay out, we are going to engage our therapy services that we usually offer through gaggle or through our own counselors, extending that somewhat into summer to make sure they have those connections, as well as identifying those students who may need that extra layer of support. And hopefully, those are the students who we also know would be targeted by our summer learning opportunities, that we would say we want to draw those students in to be a part of what's going on, and in a smaller group format, welcome them back in to that face-to-face environment with us to be ready for fall. But for the most part, all our conversations with counselors have been around, you know, concerns for people who might choose virtual, and what can we do to continue to wrap our arms around them, to draw them back to face-to-face. And so far, that's been going quite well to bring them back in.
I can't speak for high school, but I can speak for elementary, particularly kindergarten, and it is challenging. And I totally appreciate the support that has been provided for those students who are, who might be struggling or who may, who may need extra support. So overall, I think we're, it's, it's been challenging, it's been exciting. However, I, I do know those problems that may exist. So I'm going to give you that plus side as well, because it, I do think that the work has been very well presented. The delivery has been great, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there a movement to test the statewide level, what we've, you know, where our kids have come and where, where they should be, and what's happened over this 15, 16-month period for our own district and for the state as far as where we're lacking? I mean, as far as the test scores and to compare to where they have been and where they are now? I mean, is that at a state level, or are we doing anything like that, or locally?
Well, I, you know, we, we offered the PSAT 8, 9, 10, the SAT. We had a pretty good turnout as it relates to that. Our M-step numbers aren't as healthy as what the SAT and PSAT were. So we know that we're not getting that assessment data on all, all kids, at least from the spring assessment data. But we also know, as we come into the fall, we do a lot of benchmark assessment data and collection right away. And so, you know, I think the internal stuff that we do, I think, will give us a good idea as to where kids are at, and I think that's where we really need to focus in on. You know, I mean, we have high expectations, and we want 1-1 to look as good as it can within our comparators, but the reality is, it starts with where our kids enter, and we have to meet them where we are. You know, that's, I think, I think we're all on the same page with that. And just knowing that we'll have, for some students, we'll have the spring assessment data, for others, we won't. We won't have that statewide, that comparator, school-wide data, but we'll piece all of the different things that we do together to make sure we have a good read as to where kids are at coming into the 21-22 school year, and then take it, take it from there. In terms of a push, I don't know about a push from the, from the state level or from the community, but I do know that a lot of our community and our, and our family want to know how their students are doing. And, you know, we saw that with the attendance rates, definitely for the PSAT and the SAT. And, you know, not that our M-step rates were great in terms of participation so far, but kids are coming in, and our virtual kids are coming in as well, just not at the rate as, as some of the college board assessments that we had. Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything? No, nothing to add.
I just can't, I just can't think of a time when assessments were, were more important. You know, you know, for, for years, teachers have complained about all the testing and assessing and testing and assessing, and, and right now, boy, it's just going to be all over, all over the board, you know? So...
Is, is there confidence that by offering the virtual, that that's not going to be a detraction for the kids who are choosing to go face-to-face? Are they going to be pulled back? Or I guess I should say, will the teacher's ability be pulled back at all by having to talk to two audiences?
Well, we think no, because of the mode of instruction that we're using. We're going to move away at both, at the secondary level, away from the high flex mode. So that's why the scheduling has taken long... So, that's why the scheduling has taken longer. It's really taken us since January, when we launched this to prepare for fall, because we've been planning what it looks like to ensure an instructor that is teaching a section of virtual at the high school or the middle school is only instructing virtual. So, that way, we kind of isolate that, which should hopefully help both accelerate the class at the pace they're at and ensure that the connectivity is the same.
Yeah, that helps me understand it better.
Yeah.
Mike, Michael, and Mike, is it, is it too early to know if we're seeing any of the families come back who kind of, the students kind of drifted away last year or have some sense of what enrollment will be? We hearing from any of those families? I mean, was the number like two or three percent of a decrease in enrollment, and I'm just curious if we're hearing from any of those families?
We are, I don't have a strong number for you, but anecdotally, as we've talked with counselors at middle and high level, for me, they keep saying, okay, I did reach out to that family, here's what they're choosing to do at this point in time, and there are a number of them that are returning to come back to us, or they were going to come back and choose the virtual option. And sometimes even after that conversation, they feel assured that returning, not to virtual, but to face-to-face is still a good option for them. I'd love to get you a solid number on that, and that's something we can do for the next meeting.
Well, or, I know it's going to take some time, but that's a preliminary question, but I'm hoping some of those families do come back.
Yeah, yeah, us as well.
Any other questions for Mike or Michael? Very good, thank you, gentlemen, good presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move to our comments and communications section. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay. I'd like to welcome Mr. Jim Schaefer, our only speaker this evening.
Good evening, School Board. If you don't know who I am, my name is Jim Schaefer. I'm the swimming coach at Portage Central. At least for three of you, I think you know me fairly well. I'm here to talk about the co-op with Portage Northern and Matteawan. In one of your, in one of the agenda documents, it states that Portage Central is in support of this. I can't speak for the whole school, but I can certainly speak for my coaching staff and my program that we are not in support of this. It's kind of hard for me, because I walk by and I see this beautiful new auditorium that's being built, very similar to the one that we have, that I get to work in every day, that I'm very fortunate. And some of you might ask, okay, so how can Portage Central and Matteawan, who doesn't even have a pool, Calm Zoo Central, Lower Norax, how can they support numbers in Northern Camp? So, I guess I'm here to give you a little bit of a solution. If I'm going to come and maybe identify a problem, I'm going to come and give you a solution. And our solution has always been five kids. Invest, find five kids in the middle school that is willing to come into your program. And if you can do that year after year, you can easily, easily weather low numbers. And that's what we've been doing year after year, and some years, it works, and some years, maybe we're less than five, but our numbers are able to be healthy year in and year out. And so, I would say to you, to invest in your kids, invest into the middle school, rather than go outside to another district and bring those kids in. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Okay, are there any comments from Board Trustees this evening?
I just have one comment. I would be interested, Mr. Schaefer, in talking to you further about that solution that you brought forward, so give us some more details at a later point.
I would be more than happy.
Anyone else? Okay, I just have a few things. I'd like to, number one, thank our Portage voters for approving the renewal of the Countywide Special Education Millage. Over two-thirds of our voters in Portage said yes to that, and that vote and their generosity means that our special ed students will be fully funded going forward, and I want to thank Mark and Michelle on behalf of the board for getting the word out to our voters on that proposition. Also want to let, remind everybody that we have a retreat on May 24th. The agenda for that retreat includes a lot of follow-up discussions on our global ends policies. You've got the minutes from the policy committee meeting, and we've done some work on that. And in addition to that, we'll also have an update on the district values and equity work. That's what's planned for that retreat. If there's anything else, please let me know. And I'd also like to ask everybody to stick around for a few minutes after the meeting so we can put our lineup together for the upcoming graduations at Portage Central and Portage Northern. Okay, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is approval of meeting minutes from the April 12, 2021 regular business meeting and the May 3, 2021 special meeting. The second item is that the Board of Education approve the operational policy revisions as recommended by Neola as presented. The third item is that the Board approve the Portage Northern High School and IM Club to travel to Japan, scheduled for June 21 through 30, 2022 as presented. The fourth item is that the Board of Education authorize the upgrade of digital signage at Central High School and Northern High School by Sign Art Incorporated of Calm Zoo, Michigan, in an amount now to exceed $59,040, the proceeds for which will come from the Building and Site Sinking Fund. The last item is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of new wayfinding signage for the Central and Northern campuses from visual entities. The cost of $112,016 will come from the 2019 bond fund proposal. All those items were discussed at our last meeting, presented there. Are there any exceptions? Very good. Then the consent agenda is approved as presented, and we'll move to our seventh agenda item, Assurance of District Performance, the first item being Monitoring Report 1.3, Post-Graduation Success. That's on page 45, and is there a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make the following motion, that the Board of Education accept the Monitoring Report 1.3 ends as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry.
So, you have the report in front of you, and the data there is also been presented, but Mike and Michael have just a few comments about this particular report that they'd like to make.
Thank you, Trustees. We wanted to share just a little bit, especially in light of how our data is changing with the COVID situation, leaving a little hiccup and some gaps in there, which you'd notice in the report that you have in front of you. But still, our goal is still the same around that end statement, having our students having the knowledge to succeed and skills necessary to succeed at post-secondary institutions and in the world of work. So, there were, again, consistent improvements, but they were small. We've shown those consistent improvements over time. Most of them have moved in the direction that we would all want to see, and a few regressions to the mean over the last few years, which is similar over the last two or three times we've presented this report. We also included our graduation rates with our comparator schools, and keep in mind that COVID data, interesting component there. I wanted to just highlight two main pieces of data here. You may want to flip in your packet if you have that and can't see the screen well, but this is our four-year cohort data and dropout rate. On the first graph on the left, we definitely want to see an upward or steady trend, our current number for last year's graduation of 96.88% of our students graduating within four years. And that trend has been on the improvement both across the state of Michigan and here in Portage, although those gains are small and are reaching near the top of what would be possible for us. But we will continue, because we always know there's some students that we want to reach that are in there. If we take a look at the four-year cohort dropout rate, this is the graph on the right, and this is where we would want to see the trend decline. So, we want to see students who are leaving us in that cohort continue to decline. Right now, we're just a little under 1% of our students. And so, these two numbers are numbers for us that we appreciate moving in the right direction. They're also moving that way for the state, so we believe overall that we're part of the health of that process for us. If we take a look at our comparator schools, and visually, to let you know, this chart begins at the bottom at 80%, up to 100%. So, this isn't a scale of 0 to 100, but 80 to 100. The first two schools on the left are Portage Central and Portage Northern, and the rest are all of the comparator high schools. So, you can see that all of our schools, Portage Central and Northern, land near the top, at least top third of all our comparator schools. And with each colored set of bars, we're looking at just different years of graduation, with the gray bar on the far right being the 1920 cohort graduation rate. So, we can see that our trend kind of moves a little bit up and down, so does everyone else's, but we want that trend to remain high for us, and we want to spend our time continuing to keep that, keep that number as high as possible. If we break down exactly what we have for Central and Northern, you can see that those numbers land at 96.62 and 97.14 last year, which a good, a good amount of the work with our, both of our high schools around ensuring on pace for graduation, as well as what we do in senior year to ensure students are going to make that finish line in the four year. In the report, we included the five-year cohort graduation rate, as well as some other tables relative to our work. You'll see a gap in our ACT Work Keys data that's in there, which is a workplace readiness assessment. Since last year, we did not give that assessment, so that data will be missing from the table, and we mark it as such in there for future use. Last, I just kind of want to highlight, I know I've said and mentioned this before, that our education for employment, which is a piece of data that is on one of our tables, has changed its name to Career and Technical Education, CTE, more in line with other places around the state, but it's more than just a name change. They're working on putting together that CTE hub, a center-based place for them to house a lot of their CTE programs, which will be centrally located, and that continues to not just be a high school impact, but it goes down into middle school and elementary, where they do some career pathway work with middle schools. And this week on Wednesday, our middle schools will be participating in the My Career Quest, which allows them to kind of connect with careers, with employers in the area, and see how they may create a career pathway, just to open and explore those thoughts and ideas for them. So, we're expecting CTE growth to continue. You can see an uptick from our CTE enrollment at our high schools in those programs, and we imagine that trend will continue, especially as a new facility is developed and launched, as well as how they're developing those programs. Look forward to seeing how that works. Just want to say a thanks to all the data analysts from Melissa O'Keefe for us, and a lot of the high school principals, our testing teams, and folks in the CIA and KRESA have helped us put this together. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Is My Career Quest going to be virtual this year?
It is virtual this year, yes.
Well, not a question, just a comment, but the, two of the tables that are the most important tables you present to us all year are the four-year cohort grad rate and then the comparator schools four-year cohort grad rate tables, in my mind. And the news there is good. I mean, it's just chipping away at improvement, and we look pretty good compared to the other schools who look a lot like us in terms of the communities that they serve. So, my thanks, my thanks to the whole team.
That goes to our high school staff and all of those who develop them as well, as those principals.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, great report, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Let's take action on this. All those in favor of approving Monitoring Report 1.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and Monitoring Report 1.3 is approved. The next Monitoring Report is 2.9 Emergency Superintendent Succession. Is there a motion, please?
President Minant, I move that the Board of Education accept the Monitoring Report 2.9 Emergency Superintendent Succession as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second? Thank you, thank you. You probably noticed there's no changes in this report from last year, and unless someone has questions, could we move to approval? Is that okay? Okay, all those in favor of approving Monitoring Report 2.9, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and Monitoring Report 2.9 is approved. Our next Monitoring Report is 2.11 Long-Term Asset Planning. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I offer the following motion, that the Board of Education accept the Monitoring Report 2.11 Long-Term Asset Planning as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you, Celeste. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mark?
So, this particular policy is entitled Long-Term Asset Planning, but specifically deals with our grounds, facilities, and infrastructure. The report, this, this report is, you know, kind of updates us, updates you on the activities that have taken place this past year. It's really a continuation of the, of all the projects that are funded by the 2015 bond, so that was a process called Designing for the Future, and we've, we've continued to, as our projects wind down, the primary group that's making the final decisions now is the core team. Really, the only thing we have left, there are a few punch list items at West Middle School, the auditorium here at Northern, and some other enhancements, improvements at the central campus. So, that work continues under the guidance of the core team. Again, a lot of this information that's in this report was also covered as we prepped for the bond, the work that we, that we did through our surveys, our elementary feasibility study, the surveys both last spring and again, this past spring, so that's all part of that process. And, and as you recall, this, what we're embarked in here was, is really described in three phases. Phase one, which was all the projects that resulted from the bond passage back in the early 2000s. Phase two addressed our middle schools, stadiums, and pools, and phase three, now that we're going to be, you know, looking at here in a little bit, addresses the rest of our elementary facilities. So, that's, that's what this, this report kind of touches on all of those areas. We continue, in other parts of the report, we continue to look at a lot of information, a lot of data as we make decisions, review our district demographics in a number of different ways. That work continues. And then the last piece of this, well, I wanted, all of the major changes that took place with this 2015 bond project either had approval from the board or were brought to the board for information. The biggest piece of that was when we changed what, the amount of money we were going to expend on the PCEC facility and transferred funds and changed the West Middle School from a general maintenance, excuse me, from minor renovations to moderate renovations, and the board was brought to speed on that, up to speed on that, and that project essentially is finished. And then lastly, change orders of over $100,000 have come before the board for approval, and none of those changes resulted in any kind of a reduction in quality that we've become accustomed to. So, that's really all I have for this report. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mark? It was a good report, Mark, thank you very much. All those in favor of approving Monitoring Report 2.11 Long-Term Asset Planning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the Monitoring Report is approved. We'll move to our action items, the first one being Resolution to Submit Bond Proposal. Is there... Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution to submit bond proposal, August 3, 2021 election date, as presented.
Thank you, Keith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Mark, do you want to just give us a little synopsis here?
Sure, I, I can, and I'll just start with what the recommendation is. The recommendation is that the board adopt the resolution that's enclosed, which places the bond proposal for elementary schools and other district-wide improvements for $175,725,000 on the August 3, 2021 election ballot, and directs that the Secretary of the Board of Education file a resolution with the county clerk, who serves as the election coordinator. At our special meeting last week, you heard a lot of information on the, both updating you on the process that we went through to get to where we are right now, you also heard the results of the survey that were, that was conducted by Perspectives and presented to you, that survey that was concluded in March of, of this year. So we've drafted through our attorneys the, the necessary resolutions and language for the bond proposal. So that has, that has happened with a lot of input from staff, and our, our bond counsel, and financial advisors were also involved in those discussions. So, you know, again, just a reminder that this work is all very process-oriented. It started with community dialogues that were facilitated by Bill DeYoung, who's, who was also involved in the 2015 bond, also surveys that took place at that time, and, and really honed in on this last step of the process, which came through on the recommendations from the steering committee, that, that within five years from when the, the 2015 bond took place, that we would address elementary facilities. So we're looking at replacing five of our oldest buildings in the district, also renovating Mooresbridge Elementary School, to meet the educational specifications that were prepared by district staff and our consultants. So we're at that point now, where today is really the last day where you can take, take action on this. It has to be submitted to the clerks by 4:00 tomorrow afternoon, and that's the, that's the timetable we're on in order to have an August 3 election. So rather than repeat everything that we did last, last week, and as far as process goes, I'm happy to answer any questions that may have come up between then and now.
I guess I, Mark, no questions? Just a couple comments. I appreciate everybody's hard work on this, the staff, the board. We've been working on this for a lo, a long time. And, and a lot of that, that's what our job is, you know, we're not, you know, we're going to the community and saying, we think this is what you want. Nobody likes tax increases, this is an increase, we're keeping taxes, the, the millage rate the same. There's high value, what, what this, what this community will receive. I was reading an op-ed this weekend, I forwarded it to Mark and Randy, and they talk about some communities that have higher taxes, have the nicest parks, the nicest schools, they're safe, they're clean, and people perceive value in good schools, nice parks, safety. And I think our community, I mean, it's up to the community to decide this, but you know, we've done a really good job parsing out what we think the community, what is best for this community, and now it's, it's really up to this community to decide, is this what you want? And I think it's clear, I think we did really, you know, everybody here, the board and the administrative admin team, did a stellar job parsing this out.
Yeah, thanks. That just allows me to add that, that you mentioned that I probably should have, the fact that the timing of this allows us to maintain our current debt levy at 6.85 mils. I think last year when we surveyed, it was going to be an increase of about a mil and a half, and we're fortunate to be in a very good financial situation in the district, and, and, and this is huge, that you can, that you can do this amount of work with, with no increase to the existing debt levy. So that is, we're very fortunate to be in that position.
And, I mean, Mark, I would say, you know, reflecting on the survey work we did a year ago, I mean, the two big issues that jumped out at me were, number one, the neighbors around the southwest edge property that did not want that property developed. And then number two, last year's proposal was the increase in the millage, and we actually called a timeout and said we need to stop, and we need to reflect on this, and, and we did. We, we took a year pause, and we reflected, and we reworked the plan, and we're, we're not going to develop that southwest edge parcel. And by just stretching out the project, you know, starting it a year later, and then adding another year in the schedule there, we figured out a way to, to make it fit without that millage increase. So I'm, I'm thrilled with the work that's been done. I, am I losing a year? But I kind of count two and a half years on all the planning work on this. So, I mean, it's just been a significant amount of work, and, you know, we were smart enough at the end to pause and make a couple last adjustments, and what the surveys show 62% support. And I, I think we're going to get a couple of points better than that in the final vote. But I'm, I'm confident, don't want to put anything in front of the voters where the survey said 51, 49. I'm confident that we've done our homework, and this is going to have wide community support. So it's, it's a thrill to be able to support it tonight.
And I would like to add that for the community, there's no cheaper time to do this. Obviously, the price has gone up, but the interest rates are so low that we're borrowing at the, for the future at such a tremendous rate, that it's a great capital improvement for the Portage Public School systems to do this at this time, that it's an opportune time with the money that we've saved by investing at lower interest rates for the district to do this big building project and get the elementary levels up to a level that we think is appropriate at this time.
Well, then I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm real happy to support this proposal because it gives our kids 21st century learning spaces that they need. You know, we chose not to go the renovation route, and the route we are taking is cost-effective, it's a long-term solution. And beyond that, it's going to build a stronger community here. It's going to maintain property values, and young families move to places with good schools. And good schools includes the facilities, and so I look at it as a, as a real investment in our future for the community as a whole. And I'd also like to thank Mark and your team and the professionals you recruit to put this proposal together, and I think we're all very excited to vote to affirm this this evening. So thank you, thank you very much. Okay then, Barbara, let's, let's take this to a vote, and let's make it a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Grappers?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rathburn?
Yes.
Dr. Shelton Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Van Antwerpen?
Yes.
Mrs. Novaria?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Very good. The motion to submit the bond proposal resolution is, is passed. Thank you. Our next action item on page 77 is to reconfirm the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. Is there a motion, please?
President Vannant, if I move that the Board of Education reconsider, confirm the 2020-21 Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan as presented.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Celeste. Is there any discussion? Okay then, all in favor of approving the 2021 Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion to approve the COVID-19 Learning Plan is approved. Thank you. And we'll now move to our next agenda item, which is administrator appointments. Is there a motion, please?
President Vannant, if I move that the Board of Education approve the following administrator appointments effective with the 2020, 20, excuse me, 2021-22 school year for Portage Public Schools as presented. Kimberly Cognetti as principal for Portage Central Middle School, Alexandra McCullough as principal for Lake Center Elementary, and Zachary Crouch as principal for Mooresbridge Elementary.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brad?
Some good, with some good, good information. Asking you to appoint these three administrators for the 21-22 school year, beginning with Ms. Kimberly Cognetti. I'm going to ask Kim to stand up, she is here tonight, as the new principal of Central Middle School, replacing Jeff Hamilton, who will be retiring at the end of this year. Kimberly's coming to us, most recently as from Davis Elementary and the Decatur Public Schools, but has a history here in Portage, as she is a PC grad and did her student teaching at Amberly as well. I think one of the things we're excited about is Ms. Cognetti's background as an instructional coach and middle school math teacher in, in the past. So she's going to bring not only good leadership to Portage Central Middle School, but also join our secondary leadership team and bring some good dynamics and good viewpoints there. So we're excited to have Kim join us. I will point out, Kim and her husband Joe have two kids, six and four, and her husband Joe is a Portage Northern grad, so they've already navigated that part of, of their lives there. So we're also asking the board tonight to remove the interim tags from both Alexandra McCullough and Zachary Crouch as principals of Lake Center and Mooresbridge Elementaries. They both have stepped up to do tremendous in this very unusual year, and I think Mrs. Jansenias and I were talking, there's really no interview process we could go through with the two of them that would mimic what they have experienced this year. It's been much more a episode or a season of the reality show Survivor than a true job interview. So we're asking the board to please remove the interim tag from them and allow them to continue on in the great leadership that they've provided for their two buildings. And Zach and Alex are here as well, I'll have them stand up and wave as well.
Thank you, Brad. Is there any questions for Brad or any discussion?
Brad, I just had, because I asked Mark, I, you know, he taught, Mark in his memo talked about the, the process, and I was just curious, you know, this is a thorough and rigorous process, and I'd like to know a little bit, could you give us a rough idea? I mean, there's a team?
There is, there's a team. We do an initial screening process, the team this year, for that was myself, Dr. Pascoe, and Mrs. Jansenias. We actually had 35 applicants for the Central Middle School position, and narrowed that down, and did initial screening interviews between 10 and 12 of those folks, and then brought in a group of folks to a much larger team. There were 10 of us on that next interview panel, including Mr. Albertus from Central High School, both Dr. Thompson and Mr. Messenger from the middle school level, Dr. Mattson Gerhart from Special Education, and then brought the three finalists back to Central Middle School, where we had panels of students, staff, and parents provide us feedback from that. It's a really good process that we've used throughout my time here in the district, and it gets all those different perspectives. One of my favorite things to do is be able to watch the interactions of all three of our principal candidates with the students. We ask them to kind of have it come in with a brief lesson or activity to do, and then just start answering questions, and that really can reveal a lot about our candidates and their interaction that they're having there.
Do the, do the candidates provide any references, or?
Yes, candidates do provide references, which we check at the end of the interview process.
For all the candidates, or?
For whoever we are moving forward with at that time. I do let the candidates know as they go into that final step that that will be public, because obviously we give the names, and they're in front of staff, students, and parents, so then, to make sure that they've let the appropriate parties know in their, if they're in another school district, or if they're in a building here, that everyone's aware of that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brad? Well, on behalf of the board, I'd also like to thank Alex and Zach for stepping up this past year when you were needed, and appreciate the work you did. And Kimberly, welcome to Portage, and congratulations on your appointment. We'll take action on this motion. All in favor of the administrator appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes, and the administrator appointments are approved. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, moving on to our discussion items, the first item is the KRESA 2021 General Education Fund Budget. Hi, Paula.
Good evening, Board of Ed. Included in your packet, this board meeting is a recommendation that the district support KRESA's 21-22 general fund budget. This is something that each local school district has to bring back to their Board of Ed for approval, and as in prior years, we plan to make a slight revision to the language that includes, based upon the information received from Kalamazoo Regional Educational Service Agency, and recognizing that a limited review of a budget document provides limited oversight of the financial affairs of an organization. We did not prepare this budget as a district, it's passed down to us for our board to approve, so that's why we include this language in the resolution when it will be passed at our next meeting. Included in the packet was a budget narrative and sample resolution. Are there any questions regarding the KRESA budget at this time, that I might be able to answer or take back to KRESA for further clarification?
I'm sorry, Paula, any questions? Did anything stand out to you, or?
No, it looked pretty standard when I read through everything. They handed it out at a business manager meeting that I was not able to attend, so I, I circled back around with Scott Thomas.
Any other comments on the KRESA budget?
Yeah, I mean, not, not on a specific budget, but this is just one of these weird things in state law, so.
Just a formality.
Yeah, so, yeah, Paula, as, as long as you're saying there's nothing in here that has, you know, flames coming off of it, it'll have my support.
Nothing that's alarming. Pretty standard.
Okay then, Paula, thank you. Our next item is the KRESA Biennial Election, and as you are aware, Lynn Coward is running again for her seat on the KRESA board, and our district needs to send a representative and appoint an alternate to appear at KRESA on June 7 at 5:30 PM to cast our vote in favor of Lynn Coward, and I wondered if there's anybody who would like to do that. The whole process takes about 15, 20 minutes, it's no big thing, you get to meet representatives from other boards around the country. Will you be there, Randy? Excuse me? Will you be there? If I'm appointed as our delegate, I will be. But I, I can see you anytime, you know. Would anyone like to do that?
I think what he was asking is, would you like to do that?
Oh, I sure would. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Excellent.
I just, I just like to comment, Randy, outside yourself, Lynn Coward is one of the most intelligent and biggest assets on that, that board. I always, I appreciate her perspectives. I mean, when we had some issues here in Portage years ago, Lynn stepped up, and I just remember her presentations to us, and, and there's this thing sometimes called acknowledging the brutal facts, and Lynn could bring us stuff and make us feel good about it, and it wasn't, but I, I just have the utmost respect for her, and, and all her efforts, and her energy, and, and would you please pass that on to her for me?
I certainly will. I think we're all pleased she chose to run again, yes. Okay, I'm, I'm going to go cast that vote, and if I can't make it, who would like to be the alternate? Ah, Terry, thank you very much. So, we don't vote on this today.
No, you can't. By law, you have to wait. There's, there's a certain timeline that, that you have to have to, to take action, and that's not tonight.
Yep, well, we want to follow the law.
Right.
We won't do it. All right, fair enough. Our third discussion item is the Central Middle School-North Middle School Ballistic and Security Window Film Purchase.
Yeah, thank you. This, we, this has been a topic of discussion by us for quite some time now. We brought it most recently back to the board in March of the We brought it most recently back to the board in March of this year, asking that we use some of the bond funds to cover the cost of this. So the, the recommendation that Ron is making is that we approve, approve the purchase of ballistic and security window film for both Central and North Middle Schools. That total project would cost us $150,952, and the proposal is that we award that to five-star window coatings of Grand Rapids, and funding would come from the 2019 Bond Fund Proposal 1. So this is, this is under the budget request of $400,000 that we had presented as an estimate earlier. This is the company we've been working with and have done some ballistics testing on this material. We've worked with our school resource officers to identify where this would be, should be applied in those facilities that would best serve the safety of our, our students and staff, and we have identified those areas. So there's not much more to say about this, other than I think it's a nice opportunity to enhance the safety of our school buildings. And I can answer questions. I know Dave Skinner, I think, is also here in the audience. He was, been working with, with Ron on this, between the two of us. I hope we can answer any questions you might have.
Just a couple of quick questions. Just one small concern is, do we, are we concerned that there could be a, they can't start till July 1st, and it's going to be a three-month process, so that will bleed into the school year? Is there any concern of disruption of classes while they're?
I think the work is intended to be done when students are not in the building. Dave, have you had any, is that like evenings, weekends, when school is in session, if it goes that long?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there, and, and obviously, just for the community, you know, there, there was a lower bidder. Is there, I imagine they didn't meet the specifications, or?
Correct. That was, I mean, this was a pretty specific product that we were looking at, as well as the installation process for putting it in. Anything you want to add, Dave?
Their, their installation plan is going to be less than five stars, and the way that that work works, it's a, it's a process, so it needs to take that a lot of time.
Thank you.
And Mark, I don't recall so much parent concerns, but I do recall significant staff concerns about this issue. That sticks in my mind, so.
Yes. Yeah, there were, there were many, especially staff concerns.
Yes, yeah.
On this, you know, given the amount of glass in that.
There's a lot of glass.
In those two buildings.
A lot of exposed glass.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that item? Okay, we'll move to discussion item number four, the Northern Naterium Furniture Purchase.
Okay, again, we're proposing, recommending to the board that we approve the purchase of building furniture for the Naterium here at Northern from Custer in the amount of $49,771.81, the proceeds which will come from the 2019 Bond Fund Proposal 1. So as we near completion of that pool, it's time to, to outfit that. We've been working with Custer, Custer Furniture for, for this entire project. They've been very good to us price-wise, and so this is an extension basically of the work that they've been doing at the Central Naterium, and this place here will be equipped, you know, pretty comparably to what we have there. The configuration is a little different. We have a larger, kind of a pre-function space here because of the layout. It's a standalone facility versus an add-on, so there's some differences in what we purchased, but essentially the same, same quality, same type of furnishings.
Any questions for Mark on that one? Okay, we'll move to discussion item number five, the Central Campus Student Parking Lot Expansion.
Okay, so this is another one of those issues that we made the board aware of. Ron did some explanation of this when we developed a drop-off area for buses at the, at the secondary, at Central Secondary Campus. We developed a lot that we can easily convert into a parking area, overflow parking area for our students primarily at Central. If you ever go by that building during the day, especially as it gets closer to the end of the year, this year, you know, being a little different, but that parking lot gets pretty full and students start running out of place to park. It'll also serve as a parking area for events that are housed over at McCannley Field. So we're recommending that we approve the expansion project at a cost of 43, $433,189. That would be awarded to multiple project vendors via change orders. Funding would come from the 2019 Bond Fund Proposal 1 and from the unallocated contingency. And again, this is coming in under what we anticipated to be a $460,000, so Dan Rathburn is here. Dan has been working with Ron in negotiating this and working through the change orders necessary to bring this about. So the change orders, I think they're listed here for you. As to who would be involved in that, yeah, they're on here. Lowndes Berry Choice Concrete Construction, Excel Electric, Michigan Paving Materials, and then an allowance for contingency. So. We, this is one of those that if, if we could move this to action, it would be very helpful, because it is change orders. A lot of those contractors are, you know, have been on-site or finishing up, and this would be a, a great time to finish the work without having a, a delay and calling them back later.
Is the board okay with moving this to action? Okay, is there a motion, please, to move it to action?
Mr. President, I move that we move the discussion item of Central Student Parking Lot Expansion, 6320, to an action item.
Thank you, Celeste. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, and this item is now an action item. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I moved that the Board of Education approve the Central Site Student Parking Lot Expansion Bond Project for a total cost of $433,189, awarded to multiple project vendors via change orders, with funding coming from the 2019 Bond Fund Proposal Number 1, Unallocated Contingency.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. The Central Site Student Parking Lot is moving forward. Our next discussion item, number six, is the Northern Swimming Cooperative.
I'll be handling this one. Chris Riker would normally be here, but I know he's the athletic director here at Northern. He's moving his daughter and is in transit somewhere in the eastern part of the country. So I'll present this as, as it was presented to me. The recommendation is that the board adopt the enclosed resolution, which is required by the Michigan High School Athletic Association, that would allow Portage Northern High School and Madawan High School to form a cooperative swimming program for boys and girls teams beginning in the 21, 22 school year. In the background information that's been provided there, the, the numbers of participants have been low, and oftentimes Northern cannot field a full complement of teams, and, and it, it creates them not being able to be very competitive when they're going to meets that, that they compete in. So Madawan apparently is in a similar situation. They don't have numbers either, and they're asking for this co-op, which is expected to be a two-year program. I know Northern is, is very interested in, in building their program, you know, due to various reasons. They have not had a feeder program yet on this campus. They would be working with Northern, North Middle School to, to institute more, more opportunities for our students to participate so that they could get more numbers. The way I understand that this program runs, it's, it's a no-cut program, so that all swimmers who come out would, would be part of the team, and those that put in the fastest times would be the ones that would be competing, but the other, most competitive, but the other swimmers would still get a chance to, to swim as, you know, everyone gets into the water. So those of you that have kids in swimming, I, I haven't, I, I don't know exactly how all those logistics work, but it gives lots of kids opportunities to be in the water swimming. So, and I, I think the, what I mentioned earlier, there, there not being any aquatic classes currently that are taught to students during the day at this campus, kind of adds to the problem that just kids not getting interested early enough. So as, as Mr. Schaefer said, he's, he spoke on behalf of his program there. I think the administration at Central High School is not opposed to this merger, but, and, and their support also from the, as, as, again, as Mr. Riker explained, from the league in, in having this cooperative agreement move forward. So I'll try to answer whatever questions I can, and then I can always get with Chris and, you know, any follow-up questions, and hopefully he can be here at the next meeting.
So to clarify the commitment, so this is a year-by-year commitment with the expectation of two years to start?
The MHSA expects that once you enter into these co-ops, that you go at least two years.
Okay.
And they, they would again revisit that, you know, that arrangement after two years, or probably after the first year and during the second year.
Okay.
During our time on the swim team, which we spent 12 individual years with swimmers, Madawan co-opted with Hackett High School. I'm just curious, I'm assuming that's no longer going on, or does anybody know?
I don't know offhand. It wasn't in any of the materials that I looked at to see if they're currently in a co-op. I do not believe they are.
Okay. And then I'm wondering, so is there a plan going forward to have aquatics classes offered at our Naterium in the future for middle or, and/or high school kids?
I'm not sure if there's been any discussions right now. I'd have to, I guess, check with Mr. Huber to see if there's anything been brought to the curriculum council.
Because I don't see how, if there aren't going to be classes offered, how are we ever going to have a feeder program? And then the other thing I would throw out is that the majority of kids in Portage in the past have swam, clubbed swimming through PAC, which has been a highly levied toward Portage Central Swim Club, in my experience. My children did not swim there. They swam with another swim club, which is no longer functioning. I don't know if there are any other swim clubs functioning in the area or not. I'm also wondering, there was a middle school, there was middle school instruction in swimming and phys ed. There also were middle school swim teams that were considered.
They were intramurals.
Just intramurals that took place over a five-week period between April and May, and each school had a team, and they swam three meets, and then they, they had a city meet. And if those things haven't been going on for a couple years, then therein lies part of the issue, too. I'm just, I'm just curious to talk to Mr. Schaefer about why he doesn't support this measure. I, I'm curious. I know that they always have so many swimmers at Portage Central that they have a JV squad, and that not all the swimmers on their team participate. There has never been a time in the 12 years I was a swim parent that everyone on the team at Portage Northern didn't participate, at least in even an exhibition race. And I don't know if the two of you would concur with that?
But to, to go back to your, your comment about the middle school, have the, the swimming class been cut through all of the middle schools? Because I'm.
As far as I know, there are no middle school swimming classes.
Okay, so they're, so they're.
Right now.
Okay, and so Central is able to recruit from other sources, which you mentioned.
Which is like PAC.
Yeah, which is.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't understand what he was saying about recruiting five middle schoolers. Who's going to do that? I don't even know who the coach is going to be here at Portage Northern. I know that the coach here recently resigned, so therein is an issue, too. So there seems to be more to this than just saying recruit.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's, has to deal mainly with curriculum, because at one point, sixth graders did have, it was required for all sixth graders to have swimming, and so.
And it was part of the phys ed requirement.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that was an effort to make sure that all kids knew how to swim from a safety perspective.
Yeah, from the, from the sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth grade was by choice. It was in elective.
Yeah.
And then the intramural sports, for swimming and diving.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying I'm opposed to this. I just feel like, based on what was said tonight, I, I feel like we need some answers to some of this, because it, it's been made very simplistic, and it isn't.
I, I would just like to add, Terri, with your concerns, I mean, it was kind of vague. It says Portage Central is, you know, and as Mark clarified, it was, you know, principal and leadership at Portage Central is in favor of this, but a lot of the information, I kind of like to look at some of the pros and cons of both, and then it's kind of vague. It says Madawan's willing to pay part of this, and so we don't see any financial data here, what Madawan's going to pay, who's going to pay for the coaches. I mean, it's going to be a shared, obviously, there's, there's some financial savings here, and there's probably, I, there's probably a lot of upside. I, I, but I just, it's just not in this document. There's not a lot of details. It just says there's going to be, Madawan's going to pay us financially contribute, but that could be 10 bucks, for I know.
Well, they, no, they, I mean, relative to pay, I mean, it was, you know, Madawan recognizes that they had rental fees involved when they had to rent a facility. I think they used Western's facility.
They did, and that facility is no longer available.
So, so I, I know Chris has been talking to administration at, at Madawan about what is a reasonable fee to charge, given that they would normally be paying, I think they were paying $7,000 a year, and so if we can get close to that amount or approach that amount, I think it's, it benefits us and it benefits them. We would be, I think, as the, the, I'm not sure what the designation is by MHSA, but the primary school that would, that we would be responsible for, for hiring the coaches, paying the coaches, they would be on our payroll. It also, you know, the, having more people, and I, I can't remember if that was in here or not, would, more students in the program would supposedly bring more parents into the program, which would give us more volunteers, kind of build that, that whole success builds more success, so, you know, the, the team just hasn't experienced a lot of success in recent years.
Well, and I totally understand that, and I can remember swimming other teams that didn't have enough people, and it's such a defeating experience for those kids, because there's no way that their team is going to win a meet if they don't have enough people on their team. It's kind of like if you don't have any divers, you get zero for diving, and our coaches would always recruit kids to say, hey, could you do this for us? And it can make a difference. They could win a meet by one point, just because of that. So I think this all sounds really good. I'm just, I'm just curious to see what Mr. Schaefer's objections are to it, just for knowledge.
And just for my clarification, it's for two years, correct?
Well, there's, there's nothing really binding. I mean, there's an expectation it'd be for two years.
Yeah, a commitment of two years, which would give us an opportunity to revisit the curriculum and, and maybe adjust somewhere there. But I'm, I'm for it, actually.
You know, the other, the other benefit that I see is, I, I love it when, when kids come together from other school districts, you know, and other teams, you know, my, my sons, my kids ran cross-country, or my son golfs, and they, you know, they're like bitter rivals sometimes, and then they get together and they're, they're buddies. And, and this thing, rivals become friends, you know, and, and, you know, we talk about what goes on at West Middle School, you know, that's some of the things that bind this, keep this community. You know, that's some of the things that bind this, keep this community bound, because those kids separate, but they still have these friends in both schools. And I see a lot of benefit to West. And I see a huge benefit of us, of kids and families from Madawan working together, you know? And that's kind of the way of the world. That's the way things happen in life. And so, I mean, I see a lot of benefits. I just like to make sure we have a discussion on that.
Well, and especially because it's across to another district, the benefit of the interface there is extra good, because those aren't people that they would normally come in contact with, so...
So, just to be clear, for the additional information that you're asking for, I've heard more specifics on the cost. I've heard getting Mr. Schaefer's rationale as to what his opposition is. Is there anything else?
Well, and costs, you know, how much are they going to pay, but then they don't have to pay a coaching, or do we shoulder all the coaching? Or do they send us a little extra funding for that as well? I mean, I mean, here's a thing, we just built a... How much was the pool? Like, eight million dollars?
Sixteen, seventeen million.
What is it, sixteen for the two of them?
For two.
I think it's sixteen.
Oh, that was the stadium part. I'm sorry.
That was stadium. I mean, yeah, it was like eight thousand, it was like twelve or thirteen or fourteen thousand for the pools, each of them.
A thousand?
Millions. Right.
No, I just see, I can just see people say, gosh, we built this pool, and now we're letting... These people didn't even pay anything.
Well, I would disagree. It'd be more embarrassing to have a brand-new pool and not be able to fund a team.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, and not, when you're hosting a meet, and you only have eight swimmers, you have this new facility, we've got to get kids in the program to host a full team. And if that means co-upping for two years, so be it.
So, my other, our other question, I think, was about aquatics in the curriculum.
Yeah.
And what the future plan for that is, whether it's learn to swim for middle schoolers, whether it's offering Red Cross lifeguard certifying as a gym class, master swimming, any of those kinds of things. A facility we have and could support a lifetime sport for kids to develop would be really good. And I also want to know about the recruiting piece that he was talking about. How do we do that?
Okay, let's move forward with our final discussion item, number seven, a new maintenance vehicle. Mark?
We've got a 2008 Ford truck that is, needs replacement. That truck has served us well over the years. It also does our snow plowing, but it's on its last legs. And, yeah, it's hard to beat a dead horse, or a dead Ford in this case. But we recommend to the board that we accept a proposal from Sealy Ford of Kalamazoo for the purchase of a new 2022 Ford F-250 XL Super Cab 4x4 Pickup Truck with plow at a total cost of $39,996, the funds for which will come from the general fund budget. And again, the recommendation, even though it's a few hundred dollars greater than the low bid, is from Sealy Ford, and my understanding is that just the service issue of being convenient to service the other bidders were from over in the Lansing or Detroit area. So, that's the reason for not going with the low bid on this one.
Any questions on this one?
Sealy's, they're a big supporter of the district. You know, they step up to the plate a lot, and it's, what they do is a lot more than this difference in price. So, we're, I mean, and we're getting great service. I mean, they're just around the corner, and they'd be embarrassed if they, you know, if they sold us a lemon, and I find everybody there to be of utmost respect, so...
Well...
Good rationale to go with a little bit higher.
And it is a good price. As the owner of a truck myself, this is a good price.
I want one of those with the plow and the super cab.
And if it's at all possible, if the boards could see themselves to moving this to action, that would be appreciated, so we get a timely delivery before the snow flies.
It would mean a lot to Ron. You know, Ron isn't here because of his back, and he's going to have his back fixed later this week. And if we could approve this tonight, it'd just be a good thing for Ron. He doesn't have to worry about this anymore. Is there a mo...
Mr. President, I move that the board move this purchase of the 2022 Ford F-250 XL Super Cab to an action item.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving the truck purchase to an action item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, and this is now an action item. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion that we purchase a 2022 F-250 XL Super Cab 4x4 Pickup with a plow for a total cost of $39,996 from Sealy Ford of Kalamazoo.
Second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes, and the truck is on the way. We've reached the... Yes?
Before we turn, Randy, I was just curious if we should move the window film. I don't know if it would push things up, or are we fine waiting two weeks? Does it help to move that tonight? Would it help to move that to an action item tonight for the window film? It's two, I mean, it gives us two weeks. You know, my concern is the timing. And we want them in and out as quick. Would we want to do that as well? Because it's well within the budget, and I don't see why we would wait. If Dave can give them a contact tomorrow and say, hey, this was just got approved, they can start getting materials ordered and planning.
The sooner they could get it scheduled, you know, for work, the better, so that'd be appreciated.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to put the window film to an action item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of moving the window film to an action item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. The window film is now an action item. Is there a motion, please? Page 97, 98.
Mr. President, I moved that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a ballistic and security window film for both Central and North middle schools for a total cost of $150,952, awarding this to Five Star Window Coatings Grand Rapids, Michigan, with the funding coming from the 2019 Bond Fund Proposal Number 1.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor of purchasing the window film and installing the window film, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Window film motion is approved. We've reached the end of our agenda, and I just ask board members to stick around for a few minutes, so we can put our lineup together for graduation. We are adjourned. Thank you.